I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Citizen participation, non-gender items only, five minutes per person. Please come up to the front, state your name for the camera, and Mal will start the clock, maybe? You get a little bit extra time too, if he gets back.
Good evening. I'm Julie Worley, 2417 San Juan Avenue. And Nancy Bennett and I are here tonight on behalf of Southeast Colorado Creative Partnership. And we have some very exciting news to share with you. And I'm going to give you the backstory quickly. Back in 2019, we got a request from Colorado Humanities if we wanted to apply to host a Smithsonian exhibit. So we applied. We were one of seven sites in Colorado to showcase the exhibit. Well, and we were supposed to have it in June of 2021. Well, everybody knows what happened in 2020. So the Smithsonian went back to Washington DC and was locked up. Back in early '23, we got another request. Did we want to, did we want to host it? So we were, we're a small art organization. We were smaller then. We're a little older, so we went to OJC, OC, went to OC and asked them if they'd like to collaborate with us. So they are going to co-sponsor with us, the first that we know of ever, a Smithsonian exhibit in Southeast Colorado. Crossroads Change in Rural America will be showcased and exhibited at Otero College Student Center from Friday, January 26th through Thursday, February 29th. And it's sponsored by Southeast Colorado Creative Partnership, Otero College, and Colorado Humanities. I have given you sheets. You should have them in front of you and highlighted some things on it that we'd like you to take note of. The opening reception, the exhibition opening reception will be from 4:00 to 6:00 on Friday evening, January 26th. Everything, all the exhibits, the companion presentations are all free and open to the public. So anyone can come to the opening reception at the college. Anybody who attends that opening reception will receive a free ticket to the Otero College basketball game that evening at 7:00 o'clock. And then at 5:00 o'clock that same evening, we're showing the Colorado Humanities documentary film in the banquet room, Five States of Colorado. Humanities put that together. But I want you to take special notice. We were required by Smithsonian to put together companion exhibits or presentations highlighting the crossroads theme. And Crossroads Change in Rural America is all about the change in small rural towns over the last hundred years. So on Thursday, February 1st, at 2:00 and at 6:00 in Room 120 of the Student Center, Bob Fowler is going to present the history of La Jolla, and he is so excited. So plan to come to one of those presentations. Then on Thursday, February 15th, at 2:00 again, 6:00 in Room 120, Darlene Durbin is going to present her vision of the Manzanola Dry Settlement. And then on Thursday, February 22nd, again at 2:00 and 6:00 PM, Chuck Hannigan is going to present the Holly Swink Railroad Company and how it helped grow the Arkansas Valley. So there's lots of great presentations highlighting our community, our valley. The exhibit is open every Thursday afternoon from 12:00 to 4:00 and every Saturday afternoon from 12:00 to 4:00 throughout February. So we hope we'll see all of you at some time at the Smithsonian exhibit. And what are you smiling about, Mr. Mallon? Well, I expect to see you at the opening reception. So are there any questions? We're excited about it, and we think it's the first one ever in Southeast Colorado.
Thank you so much for all that you do for our community.
Well, thank you. I like our community. I love our community, so.
I'm excited for it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Quick question, Julie. If people at Otero, or if, we're really excited on campus. Everyone's been talking about it. So thank you for all this information. I'll pass it around on campus as well. If we have other events going on or we want to kind of help spread the word is through this Facebook page, is that a good way to kind of tag you or link up with the event?
If you'd let me know, I would be more than happy to put it on.
Okay, fantastic.
And if there's anybody that wants to volunteer, because we cannot have the Smithsonian exhibit open without a volunteer sitting there. If anybody wants to volunteer, let Nancy or myself know. Or we might call you. Dean, would you like to sit and watch the Smithsonian? We have a docent's guide, so.
This is great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Anyone else for citizen participation?
Citizen Vila here. I just wanted to bring up some things that have been on the agenda for several years now. The bathroom at the City Park for the ladies, it's going on three years without having had the entryway fixed up. I don't know what the problem is. I thought it was at first something to do with the plumbing, but apparently, I don't know. It's just very rough. If you, as a man, walk through the men's room, it's nice and smooth. Perfect. But when you go to the women's, you get about three quarters of the way there, and it's rough going after that. So it would be nice to get this finally done, hopefully before the early settlers' day. Also, Walmart, who's responsible for Conley Road? Do you know, Bill? Is ours? Oh, okay. It would be nice for that high sales tax revenue place to get that road fixed over there between Highway 50 and the entryway to Billy Jim. Because, man, that's rough.
We had plans to concrete that intersection. And due to general fund budget constraints, we had to pull that. So that'll be a repair and maintenance item until we can find some way to pay for that.
Some way to pay for that?
We'll have to find some way to pay for that.
Oh, I thought it was with this 1% would help you do it.
No, sir. That 1% just stabilized the fund.
Is that going to be enterprise funds or?
No.
General?
That's a general fund.
Okay. Also, on the tourism fund, you know, we got a million and a half dollars to work with. And I'd like to see the management come up with something that's make it more clearer what that money's for. When I, when we started on this, we were looking for a place for a tourist, not an attraction, but an information outfit. And we need to make it clear because Rick said some of that money was going to be used for a fast-track train from La Jolla to Pueblo. That was the last I heard, which is about four or five months ago. But I think the citizenry needs to have some clarity on that as to what it's going to be. But I know we're going to build a multimodal there, and we've got all kinds of design, but where are we on that? That's very important. Also, my last thing is, I hope that the council will afford the citizenry to get an interview and listen in on the new candidates since Rick Klein has made it open knowledge that he's retiring at the end of February. But it would be nice that you announce your candidates far and wide and also afford the public before council makes a decision on who the successor is going to be. So that's all I had for now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else for citizen participation? Going once, going twice. All right. Ms. Neeb, if you would like to come up for your economic development report?
Hi. Good evening. It's warm in here. It's nice. I'm happy about that. I've got a few things to cover. As you've seen, I've got three pages, kind of dense. Millie's going, uh-uh, uh-uh. So I'll just get into this. I think I see better without my glasses. I broke it up into sections, economic development and also some of the other areas that I manage just so that you guys don't get too doused. And I'll try and take it easy because I think we've got enough time to cover some of these things and, and also entertain questions. One of the things I do want to talk about is gaps in economic development, the downtown development to be specific. And that, I say the second block, but I mean the second and third block of Colorado is losing businesses at a rapid rate. For us, it's rapid. I mean, it may happen over the year. But any change, any gap is noticeable. And from what I see, there are a couple of challenges for retaining those businesses. First, some of the commercial buildings are in a distressed state and need repair. I know this not just from looking at the outside, but when the MSOB grant applications came in, they listed a lot of failing roofs, structural issues in a lot of the buildings that were downtown. These were people who were part of chains and things like that, so they weren't eligible for MSOB, Main Street Open for Business. But it worried me when I read about all of these. And many of these buildings are owned by people from out of town. So trying to figure out a way to deal with that. And I've got some solutions down here for that, too. And also, some of the chosen businesses that people go into are not high value for La Jolla. And by that, I've explained. People choose to open a business because it's something they really have a passion for. That's why they open a business. But they need to, I think, maybe be a little bit more scientific and look at leakage studies and also see what is needed here and see if it would match. Because I hate for people to go through that rush. They open the door, somebody comes in, they have a good couple of weeks, and then they can't make it work. So I would like to, as I said before, down here, engage a consultant who can produce a more detailed leakage study than what we got in 2016. It was very general. It wasn't, it wasn't specific enough for the things that we need. And we basically know what we need. But it's good to have it written down. And also combine that with light and safety of the buildings that are, that are downtown. Just, just so that we can coordinate the two and figure out how we can sort of crack that nut. We need to have a plan. We can't just go about it piecemeal. Maybe after we have a plan, we can go about it piecemeal, but not until we have a plan. We also, I believe, need to have urban renewal and the city collaborate on how to save the downtown building stock before it's too late. We need to work together. Because you all control law. And urban renewal controls being able to distribute monies to deal with light and safety. So I would love to have that sort of at the forefront for the next year. I also put a little note in here that I believe, I've asked some of the people who lease from Opera House, that the Opera House Pizzeria is going to open again, but under new management. So we're not going to lose that business. It's just going to have a different iteration to it. We do have some new businesses. This is good news, okay? We have a cava bar that's going to open up on the second block of Colorado Avenue with Florishop, used to be. A cava, cava is a drink that's made out of a root from the South Pacific, and it's non-alcoholic. And the whole point is that this would be a third space, that people can go without becoming inebriated and just sit and talk and get to know each other and things of that nature. So it's actually kind of an open, wonderful concept. Yak and Yeti's been reinvented into a lounge with American fare. Last I heard, they were having a lot of problems with their heating. We have a new dance studio on the second block of Santa Fe, and I know people are excited about that because we lost the dance studio in Swink. And to have one here is a great boon to people of all ages, not just children, but I know youth really likes to use that. But sort of people like me who don't really know how to dance. I take a class. There's a K lunchbox at the Midtown Suites with Korean and Greek food. I don't know if anybody stopped there. I recently went in to get some Greek food, and I really enjoyed it. I sat down and talked to the, to the owner, quite a charming woman whose whole mission in life actually is to have food that's nutritious. It was interesting that she brought that up, but that's what, that's, that's her goal. The Barista, Barista, as you know, reopened on the second block of Colorado Avenue. Please keep giving them the business. Hasn't changed really much, except that they serve Italian, too. Southernland's is scheduled to open in March and is interviewing for positions now. Socoforio is hosting vendors in its space as well as karaoke on Wednesday evenings. The vendors, I believe, are there on the weekends and Saturdays. So that's something good to know. People are trying to generate businesses. And Jake and Kate Prime and Damon Nichols and Celeste Nichols have started a new venture called Strength Under Stress. And they're selling t-shirts and, I believe, hats and things like that. And they're raising funds to combat domestic violence, which is a very positive thing, that we have something like that happening in the community. Any questions about that or comments? Lisa, you look like you want to ask.
Well, there was one restaurant that you missed on the.
Which did I miss?
The Mexican restaurant where, what was his?
Yeah. Who?
The Tamale Show.
Oh, they just reopened?
Mm-hmm. They've been open.
Oh, I, I thought they'd been opened. Yeah. Okay.
It's under a new ownership.
Oh.
Who is it?
I'm not sure what the name of it is, but it's under a new ownership.
Okay. I thought that had happened a while ago. But maybe, maybe this is another new ownership. Okay. Thank you. I won't go in and talk to them and say hi.
Do you know their name, Rachel?
I don't.
I thought you raised your hand.
No, I didn't. I was adjusting my Zoom. Thank you, Joe.
Okay.
I knew about most of those other businesses, though.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Let's move on then to the City Park tennis courts because I know that there were some questions about that. Over the Christmas, it wasn't break at that time, but it was near Christmas. We applied to the National Park Service for Save America's Treasures grant on December 19th, 2023 in the amount of $255,760.60. And we're going to apply for State Historical Fund grant as grant match in the amount of $250,000 in April. We'll figure out a way to, to get the remaining $5,700. I figure I can pull that from someplace. So that's how much it really does cost to replace a tennis court, three tennis courts. So, and, and there aren't that many people. It's interesting, and I'll get to that a little bit later, but in the other grant. Funder, bad boys. The other funders that we, that I thought that we could approach for that, they are, they're, they're pivoting, and they're mostly looking at housing now and the homeless and things of that nature. So they would not fund this. So crush your fingers that we, that worked. So just so you know, this isn't just gee, people who like to play tennis. There's a reason why economic development would apply for something like this. Crushed the numbers last year, actually. And we could bring in between $1 and $2 million a year by having enough courts so that we could have meats. Because people have to stay overnight, they have to eat, you know, all the, all the churn effects. So it would be, it's a wise thing for us to do. Well, in fact, sports is something, and Greg Colometz tells me this all the time, that, that sports tourism is extremely important for this town to move it forward. And we do have a surge in people having, you know, heads in beds and all the rest of it, whatever we have, any kind of sports event. So this, this makes sense economically. I think Paul wants to ask me a question. Nope, nope. I saw you getting ready. So, and there were a couple of other questions about the tennis courts. People were asking, why don't we just level them and put something else there? We can't. I didn't put this in here, but there's a covenant there that was placed when we took money from the State Historical Fund to do the wall. And the covenant was, I can't remember where, I think it was a 20-year covenant, which basically, we can't be changing things around there without talking, getting their permission first. This is something that they 100% agree with. I had a talk with the property protections manager between Christmas and New Year's. And he told me that the only reason we didn't get it during the last application was that it didn't quite fit the categories for the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines. But he gave me some verbiage that I could use that we could make it work. And he's also going to be reading the next draft that I turned in. So, and he said I was one vote shy from getting it last time. But that's okay. You know, you learn, and you apply again, and you change things and make things, things work. So the other thing is, is that I found out that this is, and I thought this was true because I did do a search, the tennis courts from the CWA, WPA period are very rare. There's one in California. We, we have, we have a rare resource. We don't realize it. We just see a tennis court that we can't use. But it's something that is extremely rare from that period during the 1930s. Another question I had was tennis courts, how are you going to maintain them? They're not that hard to maintain once you actually get them rehabilitated, but you have to get them rehabilitated. You just take, you just deal with it every single year. But it's a flat surface. It's not like putting in a new window. So it's a different kind of resource, but it should be able, we should be able to maintain it for some time. Also, the tennis court survey that went out, we've had 177 replies with a 96.6% return in favor of rehabilitation. So I think the community kind of really wants this, so I'm not too worried about it. And the survey ends February 15th, 2024. I could make it go a little bit longer. What I'm doing is gathering this data for the State Historical Fund because they're very, they very much want to know that there's, that we've got the DEI statistics in order to support when I say, yes, it's not just this group of people who wants to use those tennis courts. Any questions about that? None? Grants? Okay. So, as you know, I write quite a great many of the grants for the city. And in the future, I think we need to be measured in applying for grants to accommodate our capacity to administer and complete the work. We only have one grant writer for most of them and who administers them, writes them, and I have other duties. But that being said, I'm a glutton, and I, and I like to go get money. So there are two, we've had two interesting things happen in the last few weeks. One is the Colorado Health Foundation representative, Charles Reese, has come, he got in touch with me, not me getting in touch with him, and said that he wants to talk to me about potential future projects. That doesn't happen very often. Okay, so it's the kind of thing, I mean, I've got some ideas and, you know, I'd like to talk to Rick about them, okay, before presenting them. But I think that that, well, you saw, I think you all already saw some of the ideas I have for grants because they were presented earlier. And the other one is the Colorado Trust. That was a huge surprise. The Colorado Trust reached out and said that they would like to work with us on projects, future projects. And there's one that's coming up between February 15th and I think it is March 15th that has to be filled out if we're going to have it. So the next meeting, I think I can present on those two things so you guys can know what Rick thinks is a good idea or what you think is a good idea. I don't know. I really don't know. Okay. Housing. I've been asked to speak to officials from the Colorado Forum on housing in Southeastern Colorado next week. The Gates Family Foundation recommended me to speak for the Southeast on housing. So, and I did that once before with the Gates Family Foundation. So I guess they think I know what I'm talking about, and I'll make sure that I do. And also, I've been appointed to the Community Resource Center, which is the group that presents the World Philanthropy Days. I'm on their board. So just so you know that. Urban renewal. We have elections coming up on January 25th for the Executive Committee and one board position. We have four applicants for the board position, four, which is pretty good. Bethany Bender, Carlye Boudreau, Ben Mason, and Randall Roberson. So we're going to have a good selection. The plan includes the mission, the discovery report and brand guide, guiding principles, strategic plan, financial application review, and of sort of unveiling our mission, which is to address blind and safety issues in the district by creating public and private partnerships and leveraging funding sources. We also discovered that most people in La Jolla do not understand what urban renewal does. So we're going to work as hard as we can by having, you know, a Facebook page, but also having something written that we can hand out so people understand that it's not just whatever you want to apply for. It has to pass through according to state statute, have to do with safety and light. Any questions about that? Nope? Okay. Certified local government. This is exciting. Last Friday, we turned in a $25,000 certified local government grant application to perform a historic survey of East First and Second Streets. And the preliminary investigation has suggested that there are significant Hispanic railroad and green book resources in the area and with the potential to be listed as a historic district, not just, you know, one or two houses, that would be the opportunity to apply for historic tax credits and state historical fund grants for buildings in that area. So it's, it's got some money attached to it. The First United Methodist Church is seeking designation for their church to capture its history, and also they're looking at historic tax credits as well as state historical fund grants. They did this on their own, and it's really well-written. This is the First United Methodist Church.
And where is that now?
It's over on. Yes, on San Juan and Sixth.
Sixth.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's, I met with them and I came to one of their luncheons after a service to discuss this maybe six months ago. Board member Tony Madrid approached La Jolla Rotary to develop a program that captures the local histories of businesses and their buildings that we already have from our downtown survey and provides access to that information via QR code that will be exhibited in the individual storefront windows. And that warms my heart that we've actually got a service club that is also working with the city. I mean, this is, this is forward momentum. The last thing, La Jolla Rise. That's the Main Street Creative District. La Jolla Rise was contacted by the Colorado Sun, this was last week, to provide information pertaining to cultural events and programs in La Jolla. So we're going to get some press, free press. They contacted us. We're also attending, we attended a planning session of Otero College Facilities Master Plan, and we offered suggestions for planning and strategies. The Age of the Lobster, a novel by Stephen Matthews about coming of age, was a finalist in the 2023 Best Indie Book Awards. So I don't know how many people knew that. And then Kleinmaker Spaces receiving an award on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024 from the Colorado Business Committee for the Arts for fostering creativity and innovation for the betterment of the entire community through education, tourism, economic development, inspiration, and local pride. So we got some kudos there. So that always, that always warms my heart. And then if it's all right with you, I'd just like to read one other thing. I was hoping that Rick would be here when I read this, but I wanted it to go on the record, okay? I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Rick Klein for believing in me by hiring me over six years ago. I've been inspired by your leadership, vision, at least five years ahead of everyone else, and that is true. He spots things before anybody else does. Broad range of skills, ability to plan and execute, and willingness to give anyone a second chance. Your kindness is legendary, starting with the phrase "let's not" when you want to move forward with an item pushing, don't want to move forward with an item, with, and also pushing endless wheelchairs of residents so that you can get an update on their lives. Your love for La Jolla is unquestioned. And although most residents don't know it, you are the nexus of forward momentum at the regional, state, and federal levels. Your expertise and ability to get or done, no matter what challenges, has made all the difference in La Jolla receiving programs, projects, businesses, and money. Thank you for always putting La Jolla first and your ego second. We won't miss you more than you know, Rick. We will miss you more than you know, Rick. So thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
The restaurant name was La Familia.
La Familia. So Delicia's is no longer Delicia's, it's La Familia, no wonder.
I think there's something in between Delicia's and La Familia, too. But, yeah.
Okay.
It's new management.
So La Familia sounds Italian. It's Mexican. Okay.
Her name is Alicia Laca.
Where's it at?
It's where the Delicia's used to be, and I don't think there was anything in between.
Didn't it, they had a restaurant in Los Animas, didn't they, previously? There used to be one named that there. I assume it's the same family.
Okay, thank you. And I will go in and meet her.
Any other questions for Cynthia?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. This is the first time I've been able to thank Cynthia personally for the hard work that you do in the city. After sitting at a roundtable, real philanthropy days, I can assure you that Cynthia is tenacious when she's going after funders, and they speak a completely different language. And she can communicate just fine with them. So I'm not surprised at all that these agencies that have reached out to you, because you made a lasting impact in the way you respectfully spoke to them and fought for what you were fighting for. So thank you again.
Thank you very much.
And just so everyone's aware, we have a work session on Thursday. And at the end of that work session, Rick gave a letter of resignation. I will just read that for everyone that didn't get to catch that. Dear City Council, it has been my honor to have represented the city of La Jolla. The time has come where I am ready to retire from the city, and that date is February 29th, 2024. As a career, I couldn't have asked for a better one. I felt fortunate to have been part of a lot of different projects that impacted the city. I enjoyed great employees, councils, and boards over the 34 years with the city. I have served as city manager since 1999. While I miss municipal government and my municipal family, I hope I made a difference. I love La Jolla, and I look forward to our city's future. See you on the trails, Rick Klein. So Rick will be done at least by February 29th. There's a lot that has to be done. There's a lot that's already going on behind the scenes. So as soon as we know more, we'll let everyone else know more. But that's where we're at on that. Moving forward, we will move on to new business. Mr. Maloff.
My apologies for the phone going off. Only the senior citizens should be over there. People that have that problem.
Mike?
I'm still sorry. Mr. Mayor, La Jolla Chamber of Congress doing business at 1110 Santa Fe Avenue has requested a special events permit for their 2000-- I'm sorry. Their annual banquet to be conducted at 2001 San Juan Avenue. On January 29th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, the premises has been posted. The application is in order. The fees have been paid. Management recommends favorable consideration of this permit.
All right, I didn't obtain a motion.
I'll move for the issuance of this special events permit.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that has four yeses and one abstention. All right, committee and board reports. Any committee and board reports?
I didn't attend the last senior senator advisory board meeting, but I do know that they're offering a senior trip or a trip to San Antonio in May. Contact the senior senator for details on that. And as far as the dances, senior senator, I know we had a citizen that was here last week looking at reinstituting the dances in May. So they'll be looking at that. The gentleman that actually spoke, attended the meeting, and had some pretty good suggestions, and they're probably going to incorporate a few of those. So it pays to attend a meeting, whether it's city council or a new advisory board. Going on with the other board meeting, we just completed a utility board meeting, just some quick highlights from that. It was lengthy. There was a main leak at 1900 San Juan that affected the water service to Federal College. The assisted contractors on the new sheriff's office buildings, and this is for the water distribution, and they replaced several leaking meter setters. They actually assisted plumbers in removing the clog out by one of our businesses, Wendy's, to name the business, caused by fat oil and grease and flushable wipes that don't disintegrate that create a problem with that. So that creates a problem for not owning the business. There's some other issues that came up that will be addressed later. Maybe Mr. Maloff will have to get involved with that. There's, I mentioned the last time that there's going to be continued work on the lead and copper survey of the city. If you received one in your utility bill and completed it, you'll probably receive another one, and you can go ahead and disregard that. And Surratt High School had students that toured the R.O. plant, and it was educational. It sounds like they had a good time, according to Mr. Sebo. Let me go through my notes here. Onto the electric department. There was damage, crossarms were replaced at 2209 Carson Avenue and at the airport. Three power poles were removed from the 501 Barnes Avenue, the 322 West Fifth Street, and 2909 San Juan. The poles had been abandoned, and there was no services attached to them. Several of the high-pressurized sodium whites, which are the old whites, were replaced with LEDs throughout the town. And a bidding process for the electric situation, substation equipment testing. It's been some times that it was last tested, and our equipment is old. To plan for replacement costs, we need to know the condition and the current cost of that equipment. So they're taking bids. And then there was also some very, very, just the beginning discussions of replacing trash trucks. They are quite expensive, and Martin is looking at coming up with some type of plan with some vendors and getting us a good deal on our existing trash trucks and making this to them to save the city. I cannot hear that ring.
Mr. Sebo, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Did you have someone show up, or did they not show up tonight?
We've retained the firm, excuse me, on January 2nd of Hazen and Sawyer. They're going to assist us going over information and data requests concerning the Arkansas Valley Conduit. Tonight, Mr. Mike Weber, he works for Hazen and Sawyer. He's coming down. He wanted to be present to see if anyone had questions. And then we've already begun trying to fill data requests and the rest that they might have. We're hoping to see this initial report from them completed, hopefully, in early March. It'll definitely be completed before the utility board meeting, third week in March. And it should resolve a lot of questions that we have concerning volume of water that the city could use, the volumes of water that will help us meet permit compliance, especially concerning selenium, which is the current one, but also emergent contaminants to include manganese and all of the PFOS elements that are out there that's all over the headlines people hear about.
Thank you. Gary, is that sufficient for you? That just worked out perfect, didn't it?
Oh, yes, sir.
And I'm glad that Mike is back. Mike, we missed you. Any other committee and board reports? Governing body comments?
Any governing body comments? I have questions about the process for the filling the city manager's position. And I heard your comments about, after you talked about Rick announcing his retirement, and that things are going on behind the scenes. And I'm a little concerned about the behind-the-scenes part.
Well, we're going to executive here in a bit.
Sorry?
We're going to executive here in a bit.
Oh, I didn't think, nobody told me that. So, part of the behind-the-scenes part, so good to know. All right, well, I just, I think this business needs to be done in public and that I agree with Ed that the city, people of the city should be part of the process and know as soon as possible what their part in the process is, so. I agree. I've been asked questions, as I'm sure we all have, and I said, I don't know. I have a council meeting on Tuesday, so I'm hoping that--
We still don't know one way, so--
But I think the people of La Jolla deserve to have some sort of statement from us on what to expect for the process at the end of tonight's meeting. I think that's a reasonable thing. It'll just happen, so I think we will.
I don't think anyone here doesn't want to share that. Just we have to do it through several ways, and then we'll share one. We're all on the same page.
Sounds good.
I just wanted to mention that the La Jolla Chamber of Commerce banquet is Monday, the 29th. I won't be here, but I just wanted to mention if anybody wants to buy tables or tickets, they can contact the La Jolla Chamber of Commerce.
Any other governing body comments?
I'd like, given the stints of cold weather that we had this past weekend, was glad to see that they did have a contingency plan to get people that would be exposed to these cold temperatures to a shelter. I'd like to thank Marty Lee, the United Methodist Church of Rocky Ford, which was the shelter. Sheriff Sean Mobley, Mr. Rick Ritter from the Otero County Health Department, of course, our line of fire chief, Brad Davidson, and Chief of the Police Department, Todd Quick, that they had this contingency plan to keep people safer in these frigid temperatures. And also because it's not just, it's a valley event that happened. Even Sheriff Terry Reeves from Crowley County, and they had a plan up there. So it sounds like they were able to take care of anybody. I spoke to Chief Quick today. He was unaware of anybody that was transported from La Jolla, but if it were, it was probably by the sheriff's department or their bossy. So again, thank you for that. Just speaks to the level of compassion and preparedness for our community.
Absolutely. I also had Representative Ty Winter. He urged the governor to disperse more funds to rural communities, especially our community, when they declare a national, a state of emergency in that scenario. They allocated so much money, and, you know, south of Pueblo got next to none in that. So I'd just like to thank Ty for that and for looking out for us as our representative.
Do you have a contact, Paul, for the, whenever you see somebody in distress, do you have a contact person in La Jolla?
You can contact, probably, the quickest way would be to contact our own communication center, contact the fire department, if not, contact the sheriff's department. It'll probably ring in Rocky Ford, given that they have different areas. And then, just to be sure, they'll be-- Now, I don't know that the weather event that's over, if that shelter is still going to be in place or if this was part of just this emergency contingency plan that they put in place. Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session for the discussion of personal matter under CRS 24-6-402, subjects in four and F, and not involve any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session. Any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official or personal policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Subject matter is what? Dividing a plan with regard to a search for a city manager.
All right. Any other discussion? Not a loss for your vote. That passes unanimously. We will not do business after we are done, Adrian. Thank you. And thank you all for coming out tonight.
For La Jolla City Council and the people of southeast Colorado, I'm Adrian Hart with your southeast Colorado news.